All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Good morning and welcome to the informal meeting of the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors. This morning, we will have two meetings which deal with the public hearings and the adoption of final budgets for the county and the county's special districts. At this meeting, we will convene the public hearings and review presentations regarding the various budgets. At the conclusion of all the presentations, we will ask the clerk if there are any speaker slips for any of the public hearing items. Each person submitting a slip will be given two minutes to speak. At the conclusion of this meeting, we will convene the special meeting regarding the adoption of each of the budgets. Now, first, we have two items for consideration. Item number one, bylaws for the Public Safety Funding Committee, and item two, resignation and appointment to the Public Safety Funding Committee. Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Thank you, Chairman. Supervisor Hickman will join shortly. Supervisor Galvin.
Here.
Supervisor Gates.
Here.
Supervisor Gallardo.
Here.
And Chairman Sellers.
Here. Okay. Item number one is bylaws for the Public Safety Committee, Safety Funding Committee, approving the bylaws. The second is resignation and appointment to the Public Safety Funding Committee. The board will now consider items one and two.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve items. Sorry. Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve items number one and number two.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. And I just want to comment that I am very pleased to have Kevin Robson agree to serve on this committee. A former police officer and now a Phoenix City Councilperson and a professor at ASU, so.
Great choice.
An exceptional choice. Okay. Now, I would like to ask Mike McGee, Kirsten Prindle, and Jim Rounds to come forward to present as we convene the public hearings for the various budgets. Okay, Mike, are you going to lead us on this?
I will lead it off. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the board. I'm grateful that you gave us an opportunity to be here today to present the final budget recommended for fiscal year 2025. And in the course of the presentation, I will hand it over to Kirsten to start us off with, to cover some of the budget changes and some of the highlights, and then I'll kind of give my remarks and go through some of that. And then after that, I'll hand it over to Jim Rounds, who's a prominent economist, well-known in the county and in the state, and we'll just kind of go in that order. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Kirsten.
So to start us off, we just had a couple of shifts in the adopted budget from what we had in the original tentative budget. The first one is for the Superior Court camera replacement. And fiscal year '23 Superior Court had requested $12.5 million to replace the cameras and related infrastructure. We had used $10 million of the ARPA revenue replacement funding to fund part of this project with the remaining $2.5 million in Superior Court's budget. Facilities is now managing this project, and it's considered a capital project, so we are moving that $2.5 million out of Superior Court's budget into our capital funds. The next one is for county attorneys. So if you remember from our previous presentation, we had set aside about $4.1 million in contingency funding for county attorney for new positions and other funding requests. They have requested to draw down a portion of that contingency to fund six victim advocate assistant positions and one procurement supervisor. The next item is the Mental Health Task Force. This is really just a shift of appropriations. We are moving in and out of its own separate appropriation to be within Superior Court's operating budget. This just gives them a little bit more flexibility to be able to fund within their existing budget if there's any increases for salary changes. And then the final one is Clerk of the Court has taken over juvenile corrections from Superior Court, so Superior Court has activated their one position, and it will be created in Clerk of the Court's budget. On this slide, we have the comparison of the fiscal year '25 adopted budget to the fiscal year '24 budget. Overall, the budget is decreasing by 11.3%. The biggest contributing factor is a decrease in one-time spending for payments we made to the pension and pension debt payments in fiscal year '24 and as we spend down the ARPA funding. The payments to the pension plan lowered our operating costs, which helped us to fund the $32 million increase in state mandated payments, pay for performance, and ensure we have the contingency funding available to withstand any other potential impacts from the state budget deficit. The fiscal year '25 budget is a continuation of the board's conservative approach to budgeting that reduces the burden on the citizens while maintaining a high standard of services for the community. Jim Rounds helped us to compile this information that provides a spending per person for the largest counties in the country. And this is the fiscal year '24 budget because we were able to get that from the other budgets that haven't been completed yet, so we used FY24 data. And until recently, Maricopa County had the largest population growth of any county in the coun- any county in the country for seven consecutive years. Even with this large influx of population, we have still maintained a low spending per person. We are only slightly behind Caris County, and the next county on the list is almost double our spending per person. This further illustrates Maricopa County's ability to efficiently provide services to the community. Now, I'll turn this over to Mike.
Thank you, Kirsten. I'm excited to talk about the property tax reductions that have occurred over the last four years. This graphic shows how the property tax rate has been going down since 2021. And I want to point out the blue bars in this graphic, which represents the county's primary property tax rate. This rate is, like I said, going down for the fourth straight year to 1.16, and this represents a 17% reduction since fiscal year 2021. This graphic shows how the county's primary property tax levy for fiscal year 2025 will be $257 million below the maximum levy allowed by law. As you can see, the last few years have moved aggressively down below the maximum levy. Any questions before I proceed on this?
Okay.
Another graphic that shows the property tax levy growth, this shows a comparison to other jurisdictions. And as you can see, Maricopa County's property tax levy growth on the orange bar at the end, the far right, shows that Maricopa County has the most conservative growth. The levy growth is due in part to construction during this time period. And as Kirsten pointed out, we have seen dramatic growth in Maricopa County over the past seven years. This graphic, the blue bars in this graphic show that the number of budgeted full-time employees that Maricopa County has employed since 2010. The orange line represents the rate of population growth over those years. I want to point out that the bottom row shows the employee-to-population ratio. It has gone down over the past few years. This shows that we are being more efficient in providing services to the community. And in this next graphic, the orange bar to the right shows that Maricopa County averages 3.3 employees for every 1,000 county residents. And as you can see in this comparison, Maricopa County has one of the lowest ratios compared to other jurisdictions for fiscal year 2021 through 2024.
Mr. Chairman? I have a quick question. So, Los Angeles County, I'm assuming, do they have hospitals, fire? You know, we don't have a fire department. Is that attributed to that a little bit? Or have you guys dug into those numbers? I mean, look, there's a gigantic difference between.
Yes, that is the case. They do have other services that, as you mentioned, that make the government size a little larger. However, compared to the population that they have, that ratio would still be relevant. Kirsten, do you have anything to add to that?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Hickman, we believe the other large contributing factor is that their teachers are also part of the budget as well. So it's a little bit different in how we handle school districts in Arizona.
Okay. And there's going to be nuances, Chairman and Supervisor Hickman. There's going to be some nuances in some of these benchmarks, but I think that, you know, looking at the comparison in general just highlights a few different important factors. Any other questions before I turn it over to Jim? Okay. Well, I would like to introduce Jim Rounds. As I mentioned before, he's a prominent economist, and he also provides public policy advisement to the Arizona State Legislature, Office of the Governor, multiple counties in Arizona, and several cities throughout the state. Jim, do you want to comment on the development of our budget and some of the highlights?
Yeah, thank you. Good morning, everybody. We've been, or I've been working with the county budget office for many, many years, working with you all, and we've also worked with scores of other government entities throughout the state and even outside the state. And I can say with certainty, and I have no reservations about it, that this has been the most formal, conservative, responsible practice that I've seen of any government entity that we've looked at in terms of forecast development, budget development, looking out for taxpayers. And we were asked to provide a little bit of context into that, and so we dug up a few numbers. You saw a few statistics earlier, but I always like to take a look at the state. The county is very large, often compared to how the state's doing in certain categories. And over the last 10 years, the county's general fund budget, this is where you get back to trying to normalize it so there's apples to apples, has grown by 5% a year, which is just slightly below inflation and population. So the budget has basically kept up with growth, and you've been managing to keep the real cost to the taxpayers steady over a decade. The state has grown by a little over 7%. Now, if we went back and we put your budget process and approval process and imposed it on the state's budget, there would be no state deficit. We wouldn't have the problems that we're talking about now. Another thing that contributed to it is when we were going through the period post-COVID, and we had a lot of additional federal government spending. Staff here and you all wanted to know how much of this is going to be temporary. And so we did a lot of math and worked with staff and identified certain dollar amounts that we thought would be one-time. Those weren't utilized on ongoing budget items. Almost every other entity that we've worked with was not interested in that exercise. We provided the state with a number because they weren't interested, so we went ahead and did it for them for no cost, and tweeted it and presented it at an FAC meeting, and there was about a billion to a billion and a half of one-time money that they were treating as ongoing. And so there's different reasons why you're in such good shape in terms of the budget right now. It's not just one thing. It's not just keeping the budget costs down, but it's thinking about these things that can get complicated. It's treating some of these issues after a very unusual recession like the COVID recession, treating the one-time monies for one-time expenditures, and still giving you flexibility to provide adequate services to residents. Another thing that has been popping up is you haven't used a lot of the gimmicks that others have. The state has developed a new term called one-time ongoing spending. It, I'm not kidding, it's one-time ongoing spending. It's one-time money that is plugged into ongoing spending, which means it's ongoing. So when they do their budget summaries, it makes it look like they're not in as bad a shape, because when they count up the ongoing spending, they can say, hey, in three years, we're really not that far off, but it's ongoing. So if you turn the page on their budget book, you'll see where the monies are really being spent. You haven't been doing any of that. We haven't had a single instance where we've had to bring up, I think you might be at risk for doing this particular forecast approach or this particular budgeting approach. Couple of other things. I think that the county going into the next recession, we've talked about this before, we're anticipating that we're going to have a very mild recession in Arizona. It could be a recession where we don't even lose net jobs. It'll just go to very, very slow growth. But you're probably best prepared for the next downturn compared to anybody else because of these conservative practices. And I think that's quite amazing, because there's been a lot of pressure on policymakers and policymakers putting pressure on staff to spend money on different projects when the federal government was flooding the economy with extra spending, but the Federal Reserve Board flooding the economy with easy-to-access money. Now, things have reversed, and it's going to be a little bit different going in the next downturn and the next expansion. So not only, in my opinion, will you be able to weather the next downturn better than most, you'll be able to jump on the next expansion and continue to provide services to taxpayers at the same level of quality that you're doing now, where a lot of other entities are going to be catching up. Any questions?
Any questions? Supervisor.
Jim, do you take a look at the other counties, too? I know there's so many counties that are up into their expenditure limit. They're right there, and there's a gigantic difference. We're not close. So do you guide other counties, too? Do you come and give forecasts to Pinal, Pima, and talk about this type of thing?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hickman, we have done the Prop 400E equivalent for Pima and Pinal. We've worked with Coconino, we have worked with Mojave County on water and budget issues and economic development. We've worked with, over the years, nearly every county. And sometimes we're brought in for giving some advice on budget items, but it's usually related to a particular project. Like, let's say there might be a port project in a southern county. We'd have to review their budget to figure out if it's something that they can afford, if they'd have to raise fees, if there'd be tax increases, if they have to get federal grants. So we do look at these other counties. We have a pretty close relationship with Pinal County on economic development policies, where they're main economic development advisor in certain projects. They're in decent shape because they've had just tremendous growth, and they've been making a lot of very wise economic development decisions. But in terms of that being a larger county where most of the economic activity occurs, you're second to none compared to the others when it comes to looking out for taxpayers. And yes, we do a lot of government consulting, but we do private sector consulting, too. And I think people forget I'm also a Goldwater Fellow. I look at the conservative stuff, and I'm still very impressed with what you all do. Even other projects, like with Cartwright, Mr. Gallardo, there's been opportunities to partner. We just have to get the word out a little bit more, but you've been on it.
Any other questions? Comments? Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. And I do want to say I really appreciate your partnership in helping us with our budget development. I do want to say that, you know, we have seen slowing sales tax growth, and we've prepared for that with the help of Jim and your forecast projections. And so I feel like we're in a very good place going forward for any anticipated costs or trends.
I apologize for that. So our next step, I do want to say that I, you know, this is a budget to be proud of. I do want to highlight just some of the things that we've covered and recap. This budget represents the board's lowering of property taxes for the fourth straight year. It reduces the overall budget by 11%, and the county has a history of budgeting conservatively, as Jim pointed out. And that is one of the reasons why we are able to navigate difficult financial challenges. And that is one of the reasons why we are able to navigate difficult financial challenges. With that, any other questions from the Board?
Any other questions?
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for the presentation. We will now recess, excuse me, as the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors and convene as the Directors of the various County Improvement Districts. And there is no presentation for the Improvement District. We will now recess as the various Boards of Directors of the County Improvement Districts and convene as the Directors of the Flood Control District of Maricopa County. Kirsten Prandell, please proceed with the presentation.
The Flood Control's final budget is $103.6 million with no changes from the tentative budget. As a reminder, the proposed tax rate of .1470 results in a property tax levy of $72.9 million. Thank you.
Any questions or comments on that? Okay. We will now recess as the Flood Control District and convene as the Directors of the Library District. Kirsten, you're on again.
The Library District's final budget is $48.4 million with no changes from the tentative budget. The proposed tax rate of .0470 results in a property tax levy of $27.4 million. Thank you.
Any questions, comments on that? We will now recess as the Library District and convene as the Directors of the Stadium District. Kirsten, please proceed.
The Stadium District's final budget is $9.8 million with no changes from the tentative budget. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Thank you for the presentations. Madam Clerk, are there any speaker slips for any of these items?
Chairman, Supervisors, we do have one speaker form, and it is from Marissa Hamilton, and she wishes to speak.
Thank you.
Chairman, Supervisors, I wanted to thank you for your presentation today on the budget and your previous presentation. I actually reviewed all of it again in the wee hours of the morning. I do have some concerns, but I wanted to first start off with applauding you for staying below the maximum allowed levy per state law. The levy has still grown by the $71 million since 2020, which I think should still be considered significant. My largest, I have two large concerns with this budget, and one has to do with the full-time employees that are budgeted to increase by almost 1,000 employees since 2020. That's a concern because that is ongoing, that will be ongoing expenses along with impacting the retirement fund and a burden on the taxpayers. I would have preferred that your presentation show where those employees are going. I didn't see that, but maybe I missed it. So, maybe if you could explain that after my comment, that would be great. Another concern that I have is the Maricopa County Recorder budget is increasing from $5 million in 2020 to over $17 million in 2024, which more than triples the budget, while our voters are saying that their election experience is worse than ever before based on the 2022 survey that was conducted by the Recorder's Office. This is especially alarming since the public records show that the Recorder oversees a surveillance and censorship operation in joint cooperation with the Board of Supervisors. That's this report that I handed out to all of you today. This censorship operation seems, based on the public records of your emails, intended to silence citizens that have concerns on elections. I'd like to know if the money is still being spent on that. And then, the other thing that's concerning is that the MOU with the Recorder strips most of the responsibilities from his department and transfers them to Scott Jarrett in the Elections Department. So, I don't understand why the Recorder's budget is tripling. And then, my final comment to you is just, if I could just have 10 more seconds to close. My other concern has to do with the voting locations that you have allocated that was presented last time. On Election Day, the numbers show that about 80% of voters that are beyond two miles are actually Republicans. So, I have concerns that we'll see a repeat with not having adequate election voting centers on Election Day as we saw last time. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. That concludes the public hearing on our budget. This meeting is adjourned, and we will proceed to our special meeting. A motion for item number one, the fiscal year 2025 budget for Maricopa County.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, but also like to make a comment after, if I can.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt fiscal year 2025 Maricopa County budget in the amount of $3,872,283,672 by total appropriation for each department, fund, and appropriation unit group listed in the attached schedules. This amount represents no change from the tentative budget and that we adopt the five-year capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2025 through 2029, and in addition, approve the attached executive summary.
We have a motion?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Vice Chair.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. First of all, I want to thank Mike and Kirsten and Jim for coming. I don't know where Jim went, but he probably had to leave. But that is just a wonderful job by your team over the past year. And in my three years here at the county, I've just been super impressed by all of you who work for us in behalf of the Maricopa County taxpayers, but work in behalf of the Board. And that just a tremendous job you do in preparing the information for such a large undertaking, but also answering the questions whenever we have it. And for the people of Maricopa County, right now, I just want them to hear that I'm very proud of this budget. This is a budget that you heard that was $3.8 billion, but last year it was $4.3 billion. What this county board is doing is reducing the overall budget by 11%. That's unheard of in government. You never hear government shrinking that way, especially here in Arizona, where the news of the state legislature and the governor running up a deficit dominates the headlines. But this should also dominate the headlines as well. And I'm proud of my colleagues who are working with me, but my colleagues really set this in motion. They lowered the property tax rate four years ago, and since I've come on, we have lowered the property tax rate every single year. That is phenomenal. And what you heard today in the presentation from Mike and Kirsten is that we still provide great services. We are now taxing below the levy of $257 million. That means that another board could be sitting right here and increase your taxes by $257 million. This is a choice. This is not an accident. This is policymaking at the best level in the United States. We are the most conservatively responsible fiscal government that you're going to see in the country. And Mr. Chairman, I'm very proud of your leadership. My colleagues, I'm very proud of you for working with me. I'm proud of our budget team, proud of this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Okay. We will now recess as the special meeting of the Board of Supervisors and convene the special meeting of the County Improvement Districts. Is there a motion for fiscal year 2025 budgets for the various Improvement Districts?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt fiscal year 2025 budgets for the County Improvement Districts for the fiscal year 2025 budget schedules entitled "Direct Assessment Special Districts" and "Street Lighting Improvement Districts."
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We will now adjourn the special meeting of the Improvement Districts and convene the special meeting for the Flood Control District. Is there a motion for the fiscal year 2025 budget for the Flood Control District?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt fiscal year 2025 budget for the Flood Control District in the amount of $103,589,934 by total appropriation for each fund and appropriation unit group. This amount represents no change from the tentative budget.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. We will now adjourn the special meeting of the Flood Control District and convene the special meeting for the Library District. Is there a motion for the fiscal year 2025 budget for the Library District?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt fiscal year 2025 budget for the Library District in the amount of $48,382,859 by total appropriation for each fund and appropriation unit group. This amount represents no change from the tentative budget.
We have a motion?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. We will now adjourn the special meeting of the Library District and convene the special meeting for the Stadium District. Is there a motion for the fiscal year 2025 budget for the Stadium District?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt fiscal year 2025 budget for the Stadium District in the amount of $9,750,000 by total appropriation for each fund and appropriation unit group. This amount represents no change from the tentative budget.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. We will now adjourn the special meeting of the Stadium District and reconvene the special meeting for the Board of Supervisors. Is there a motion for the Board to convene an executive session?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, before we move over to our executive session, just want to real quickly thank you, Rick, all the offices on this year's budget. I know how much work goes in. Big thank you to Mike and his staff. They worked tirelessly to put this budget together, and just want to say thank you. You know, every time I look at a budget, first thing I always want to look at, you know, are we paying our bills? Are we addressing the needs of the community? And I really believe that this budget does exactly that. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, just want to real quickly say thank you, and thank you, Mike and his team, for everything they have done in order to create such a solid budget.
Thank you, Supervisor. And I guess I'd just like to add, I also appreciated you bringing Mr. Rounds in to give us some perspective on where we fit with other counties and other communities. So, thank you for that.
And, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to thank you also. And I know, doing this, and Bill would say, doing these budgets, it takes a lot of time. So, thank you, Rick. Thank you for all the agency. Thank you for even working through having the newest resident of the county and being able to do such a great job. And Mike, this is, I think, your first budget that you've helmed. So, fantastic job. As Mr. Rounds said, this county has a tradition at this point of being fiscally conservative, fiscally prudent. I ask these questions, a lot of the same questions all the time. How are we doing in relation to other larger counties and even smaller counties? What are we doing as compared to municipalities and the state? And when you have a turnover in a budget, thank you also, County Manager, for making these selections of that tradition of solid budgeting and putting people in the place that we can all stand on the shoulders of greats. I think of Andy Kounasik and Governor Brewer, who started us on this path towards where we're at right now. So, thank you, Vice Chairman, because you got a chance now as a Vice Chairman to see how budgets are done. And that's that strong statement that you just made makes me feel better. I don't know about you, Bill, about doing one of these last votes for a final budget. We're in a good place. You know, we're in an absolute good place for anybody else coming that will look and see the history of how we do things and be able to continue on this path for the taxpayers, the business people, the business owners, the employees, where we can keep their money in their pockets and yet still provide services at such a great level. I saw on social media last night somebody trying to band together and come over here and talk about, you know, the horrible things that we're doing. Where are they? Because the facts don't play out. The facts don't play out to be chaos with a county budget like this and the taxpayer. So, thank you, guys. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, specifically for bringing us into another conservative budget again.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Okay, we have a motion and a second to convene an executive session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chairman, I don't believe I captured a motion and a second to go into executive session.
I know we had a motion. Did we not get a second?
Our second.
Okay.
Okay.
So, we have a motion and a second?
We do.
Okay.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.[1777.91]